Consultants. Externally, we need to focus on stormwater, yard use, LID practices and green infrastructure, bylaw review, buffer zone implementation and mandates, berms, and finally, the most important, sewer-ing. So Ashumet Pond, I'm going to go pond by pond and just let you know what's going on with each one of these invasions. So Ashumet Pond is a flow-through pond. It has a surface area of roughly 215 acres. Its groundwater flux, even though everybody thinks groundwater doesn't affect our ponds, it's receiving about a half a million cubic feet per day of groundwater flow. It's maximum depth of 69 feet and an average depth of 23 feet. 23 feet is quite shallow, so we need to also look at like the depth, what's affecting the bottom and what's circulating. It's 2.5 miles and it's heavily developed shoreline. The history of Ashumet Pond goes back to the early, to late 90s where the Mass Military Reservation did notice the plume starting to enter the pond, and that was coming directly from their sewage treatment facility. It was discharging phosphorus at an alarming rate, and the military decided to take action. In the late 1990s and early 2000s, the decline in water quality was very, very evident, and they found that 19 to 45% of the total phosphorus in the pond was coming from the sewage treatment plume. It was creating anoxic conditions and fish were dying. So the base went in and they studied what could be done for this plume entering the pond through groundwater. They came up with four remedial strategies, two of which were nutrient inactivation treatments, and another one which is a barrier that treated the phosphorus plume before it entered the pond. So what they decided to do is they decided to use aluminum sulfate to treat the in-pond phosphorus that had already gone in, and they also put up a barrier at the plume entry point at the base. They conducted two treatments of aluminum sulfate, one in 2001 and one in 2010. The phosphorus inactivation treatments were successful, and the reports are available if anybody is interested at that website above. The pre and post-treatment were alarming. The initial levels of phosphorus were 363 micrograms per liter, and they went to less than 20, which is below eutrophic indicator after the treatments. The mass military barrier installation was in 2006, and the installation was a ferris-hyron phase mixed system, which basically absorbs the phosphorus before it enters the pond. So I have been in contact with the Mass Military Reservation, and their treatment for the plume has, is complete. The woman that I spoke with did say that the elevating levels of phosphorus that we're continuing to see are from yard use practice and individual septic systems. So here's the data over the years of phosphorus. So as part of the Ponds and Lake Stewardship Sampling Program, my team and volunteers go out to the deepest point in Ashumet Pond and we take profile analysis data. We collect samples for nutrients at multiple levels of the pond, we take dissolved oxygen readings, and we also measure septic depth. So as you can see, I do have my pointer because I wanted to show you the elevations. Post-treatment, so we're at like six years after treatment, the mid-water is 1.27. Here we are now. It's elevated, but where it's going to be elevated is in the bottom water, where the groundwater is being fed those nutrient levels. So year after year, we're seeing 6, 7, 10, 12. The elevation of phosphorus is going up year after year at the bottom of the pond. We're also seeing a decline in dissolved oxygen, which is going to affect the entire ecology of the lake. Zero at mid-water is concerning. That was in 2020. And year after year, zero at mid-water again. So those fish are not migrating to the bottom water anymore, they're staying above the mid-water, which they're not able to escape high temperatures from the penetration of the sun. So we will see a dynamic switch in the ecology of the lake. So future treatments are not an option from the base for Ashumet Pond for phosphorus inactivation. What my team will continue to do is we do go out weekly and we collect cyanobacteria cell counts from May 1st to November 1st, and we are looking for specific cells of cyanobacteria present in the water. We will take weekly counts and in compliance with DPH. If they remain below 70,000 cells per milliliter, the pond is considered safe for swimming. If there's a scum layer present, that's another indicator for cyanoclosure, and if we see any accumulation of a blue-green algae or a film, or it looks like paint on the water, we will close the pond for a week. My team does go out, we do it weekly until November. We are looking into contracting out for toxin level screening, but right now we send it out to a lab for testing for toxins, only if there's a concerning level of cyanoc. So switching over to the San Tuit Pond watershed. San Tuit Pond watershed was studied by the Cape Cod Commission as well. They looked at the development around the pond in correlation to the phosphorus levels. Just wanted to show you, the developed area to, to the west and the east are considered concerning. This is the watershed limit. So this is the entire area contributing to San Tuit Pond. So we have a cluster of heavily developed area, we have some conservation land, but it's mostly residential, single-family. We do have a condo complex that has met the high-density family, so we are concerned about that one location, but the Timber Lane area is also of a concern. So, we know San Tuit Pond is very small. It's groundwater-fed and its headwaters are San Tuit River. Its max depth is 10 feet, that's very shallow for a pond of this size. Its average depth is 6.5. Its history, its harmful algae has dated back to the early 90s, and the Department of Public Health actually picked this pond to study cyanotoxins. So they went down there for about a 10-year period studying cyanotoxins. Thankfully, there wasn't any indicator of cyanotoxins during their testing period. We are seeing some new and emergent toxins coming into play when we're looking through our REMONZ spectroscopy unit at the Woods Hole Oceanographic Institute. We do have some ZONS deployed that are tracking different toxins of concern. So, San Tuit Pond, we see it year after year, it's the pond we're concerned about the most. We have pea-soup plume, cyanobacteria levels above 70,000 cells per milliliter. The cell count of last year was around 300,000 cells per milliliter, which is quadruple the threshold rate. So what are we doing as a town? And this is really when I wanted to let you know what my department and what the Mashpee Wapinawg Natural Resource Department has been doing over the past couple of years. We are looking into in-pond treatment, we are exploring all avenues. Can we dredge the pond? We are working with the Army Corps of Engineers to see if that can be done. Can we treat the pond? We are also working with our, the Southeast New England Partnership and consultants from ESS Engineering and other firms through NBP, Fasen O'Neill, to look if we can use nutrient inactivation on the pond. What other in-pond treatments can we do? We've already installed the solar bees, and some people think the solar bees don't work, but actually, they are working, they are doing what they're supposed to do, they just cannot handle the influx of excess nutrients. What they're meant to do is to oxygenate the bottom and prevent those anoxic conditions from occurring and thus releasing more phosphorus from the sediment. So that's what they're doing. They're oxygenating the pond and preventing the bottom sediment from resuspending for more blooms to occur. The influx of nutrients is so high, they're overwhelmed, they can't manage it. So, with the tribe, we are seeking a watershed nutrient, watershed plan for San Tuit Pond, where they're exploring all avenues with our consultants. We are working with the Municipal Vulnerability Preparedness Program to look at stormwater improvements. We are also working with the Army Corps of Engineers to look at dredging and habitat restoration for the herring. Drew and the Conservation Office is also looking into treating invasive species of variable leaf milfoil, and we're looking into cranberry bog restoration of the chopjack I just wanted to share this because the development really happened in the 80s, and when you start, this is from the Cape Cod Commission, year after year you can see the development. It went from primarily agricultural to residential. From the 84, probably, they said upwards of 200 homes were built post-84 around San Tuit Pond. So this is just to reiterate what we're doing. I did want to, you know, bring up, we most recently did receive an award through the MVP Preparedness Program of a half a million dollars to install a green infrastructure, stormwater improvements at Timber Lane, and Timber Lane and Lantern Lane, it's an intersection, it's a very old leaching catch basin that does need to be replaced, and it will be reducing the phosphorus by 100% of what's coming in from those land use. What the town is also doing, which you're all aware of, we did do a septic survey. I wanted to bring this up because we're still seeing these cesspools in operation, and the elevated bacterial levels are coinciding with those cesspools still being there. We have a bacteria closure in San Tuit Pond right now, we have a cyanobacteria closure in San Tuit Pond right now. The level of impairment is dramatic, and it's, my focus is San Tuit Pond right now, we need to do something. So I like, everybody sees this little chart and they focus on, well, septic systems really aren't the problem. That internal cycling is year after year input of septic system, cranberry bogs, stormwater. That's just what they measured at that time, that point in time. When the ACOM report went in there, they were looking at current conditions. Everything that's been put in there year after year is collectively stormwater, septic, So what we're going to get out of the watershed-based plan is going to allow for further funding. So once we have an approved plan, my department along with the Tribe's Natural Resource Department, it's going to open up the door for more stormwater implementation, or we're going through a 604B application right now for another site, that being the town landing. We're also looking for some regulatory changes at the next town meeting, but we'll see how far we get. So San Tuit Pond, it's so shallow, we don't see the thermocline at all, because there isn't one. That thermocline being a drastic change in temperature and oxygen. So it's kind of all over the place at San Tuit Pond. One year's better than others. The 2017 rain event, where we did receive seven inches of rain in a matter of 45 minutes, you can see it in the data, it was recovering. But, the suspension of phosphorus was reduced, and that's an indicator that our solar bees are doing something, and they are actually helping the blooms along with oxygen as well, but at least we still have oxygen. So Mashpee Wakebee. This is a lake of emerging concern. We're very concerned about what's going on right now with the year-after-year elevations of cyanobacteria and phosphorus. So it is the Cape's second-largest pond. It's 90 feet in its deepest point, and is separated by its northern and southern basins, and we know that the town of Mashpee has incredible and sandwich amount of conservation land that we've set aside, which is, which is great. So those areas aren't contributing to any nutrients other than the regular animal plant matter decay. The water quality is considered moderate. The sub-invasion ultimately enters Papa Nissa Bay system and the Mashpee River. The Mashpee side is showing minor cyanobacteria elevations, while the Wakebee side shows a consistent cyanobacteria elevation, continued phosphorus increase from 2016 to present. 2021 and 2022 saw advisory postings for visible scum, it was the same period of time, so what we're seeing is people are coming into their homes, they're using their water, more nutrients are entering the watershed, and that's when we see that spike in cyanoc levels. So here, it's evident in the data. Again, you go through bottom level total phosphorus, 2016, bottom level total phosphorus, 2021. The mid-water is still okay, but the groundwater is entering from the bottom, so that's where you're going to see the elevations. Oxygen levels at the bottom are declining, consistently declining. This is the Wakebee Basin, same thing, it's just more evident that the oxygen levels have decreased entirely from the mid-water, and that the levels are slightly higher, but there is a continual increase year after year. And this data was just released from this Gulf Marine Science EMS dormist, this is my first time presenting the 2021 data. Again, development, I like to see this visually, what has happened in the town of Mashpee. Development really began after 1984. So if you look at 1984, those developments really didn't start off, so I'm thinking this was more an early 90s, where this whole watershed was just inundated with cesspools, Title V, people moving in. It was really quick for a system to take on. So what we have going on at Mashpee Wakebee, we have the diagnostic study underway. The consultants are going to be collecting samples for the next two years, looking at profile data, water quality data, the delineations between the south basin and the northern basin, what's exchanging, what is the water flow from the groundwater, where are we seeing areas of stormwater coming into the pond that are at elevated phosphorus levels? The boat ramp, they're particularly paying attention to the boat ramp and seeing what comes in there. They're also looking at the bogs on the sandwich side to see if, while they're in use and flooding, if they're actually putting in a high level of phosphorus. But we believe it's going to be mostly residential and stormwater. A couple of stormwater sites that we're looking at are areas where we did have public comment of evident runoff and flow patterns right to the lake. We're also looking at the exchange between the Mashpee Wakebee Lake and Mashpee River, and what's actually entering into the Papa Nissa Bay system. Johns Pond hasn't had much study done to it. Back in the late 70s, early 80s, there was a diagnostic study done on Johns Pond by the town of Mashpee. It's a real, it's larger lake and pond in Mashpee, but back in the 80s, the diagnostic study said that residents were complaining of algae blooms and large masses of attached algae in the shallow areas. They were also paying attention to cyanoblooms back then. During that study period, they did notice a rapid decline in the septic depth, which is water transparency and clarity of almost 2 meters, which is high. And in the late 60s, residents came to the town concerned to get this pond study done because they were worried about the pollutants and algae blooms, the high-powered motorboats, and the pond level. What came out of it? The motorboats were kind of taken care of, the pond level was adjusted with the herring warden, pollutants minor from the base, nutrients, not so much. In the study, they quoted this Johns Pond community as a community designated as not requiring a sewage system. That was a direct quote from the study. The usage in this area back in the 80s was primarily forest, recreation and agricultural land, and by the late 80s, early, early to late 80s, about 40% was urban residential. Not sure of the figures now. The water quality, decature release only. The septic system leaching was found to be high in the late 70s due to the present soil type there. So the high level of leaching because of the sediment that we have is primarily sandy soils. So everybody said that says that phosphorus are absorbed in the soils, which is not necessarily true for the Cape, because we don't have those soils, we have sandy soils. So they're not really binding to those components of our soils here. We do have a high level of PFOS in Johns Pond. It's about .22 parts per billion, but as we know, the federal standard is different from the state standard and what can be regulated. So Johns Pond was developed a little bit early, and I think that that had to do with the proximity to the Air Force Base, that and Ashumet, but it really did take off in the 80s. Johns Pond was the one pond where we did see the increase that wasn't as substantial as the other ponds. So there's still a steady increase in phosphorus, but it's not to the high, high degree that we're seeing across town. Oxygen levels are still on decline, but that's from continuous input, but not as high as I would think that they would be. So my proposal would be to look at Johns Pond as a diagnostic study in the near future. So what's our future? What does it hold? We're going to see more cyanobacteria blooms, it's inevitable. If we don't cut off the source, we're going to continue to see these routine algae blooms. And with climate change, more growing days, the perfect conditions with phosphorus inflow, influx, and nitrogen influx is going to be year after year. Unless we decide to create bylaws that are, can be enforced, stricter on cesspools and what people are actually doing around our lakes and ponds, and sewer-ing. Yard use practice, I can't say this enough, if you have a green lawn, you're going to have a green pond. If you live on a pond, and you, you're going to get it. But, that's all I have, it's not great news. There's significant decline in all of our waterways. I wish I could come to you with something better. But do you have any questions for me?
I have a couple of questions, a couple of statements. The, you know, it is frustrating that the state regulations are so hyper-focused on the nitrogen. I'll say it time and time again, you know, we got to look at, these ponds are not natural, healthy, active ecosystems, they're all impeded in some shape, form or fashion now, and they're only going to get worse. San Tuit Pond is just a prelude to what's coming to all the rest. You know, factors considered that are so shallow, but our deepest ponds are getting the same effects. And, you know, we have to take a more holistic approach to looking at the ponds and what's affecting them. You know, with the phosphorus showing up in the surface waters and things, I mean the PFOS, you know, that's really concerning, because the deer eat, drink out of the water, we eat the deer, and it's all accumulative, it's ending up in some of the cahogs in the delta, you know, on the bay end. So, I mean, we need to look at all the surface waters and start looking at things in such a siloed approach with, you know, ponds, and then we'll get to the rivers when we get to it. First, we were looking at the bays, and, you know, there's, I don't understand why the entirety of Mashpee's ecosystem isn't an environmental justice community. We've suffered from the effects of the base, rapid development at the, at the, because the state and, you know, town didn't have proper regulations to effectively build out with the proper infrastructure. You know, now all the developers are gone, and the town's left with the bill. And it's not fair to the residents that have been here right along, it's definitely not fair to folks that warned the town that this was going to come to pass and come to fruition, and, you know, it's just really frustrating. But, I, we all have to advocate for the state to start looking at things more comprehensively, look at all the contaminants, not just nitrogen, not just phosphorus, but the PFOS as well. You know, they've only been testing for the PFOS for 20 years. I did have one question, who did, who did the, did the report on the, I believe, Johns Pond where you cited the quote that it doesn't need to be sued? Who did that report?
It was a consultant hired by the town, I can definitely share that with the board.
Was it ACOM?
It was not ACOM, it was another consulting party, I'm really not sure of their name, but I can provide that.
Okay. You know, one factor that I don't know if is taken into consideration is, you know, looking at the topography of the adjacent uplands, you know, when you have, factor in stormwater and such, you know, there's a lot of roads around here that, the roadways run right into the water. You see by the elevation where the water's going to go. You know, the water only needs a quarter inch per foot to travel. Some of the inclines in adjacent areas are much steeper than that. So, if we're not looking at that in relation to what's affecting the pond, we're never going to hit the mark, we're never going to act, effectively change anything. And if, you know, stormwater is the biggest culprit, then we need to act aggressively in addressing that. And, you know, so, these are just some concerns of mine. You know, I, it's just sad to say, because, you know, we have tribal members, our chief is 100 years old, he, you know, these waters were all pristine waters when he was growing up. And, you know, in his lifetime, he's seen a lot of impacts, and, you know, it physically hurts when you see that. I've seen a lot of impacts in just my lifetime, I'm half his age, and it hurts me. So, you know, some of this stuff brings my elders to tears and things, and, you know, we have to, we have to make a concerted effort to address it.
Yeah, and we're going to, we're going to be bringing some bylaw review to the town meeting, but I can't stress enough our conservation lands and what needs to be enforced. Those buffer zones in front of our waterfront need to remain buffer zones. People tend to cut right down to the water and plant their hydrangea bushes and think that's okay. It's not, it's not serving any purpose.
And to that point, fines need to be imposed that are reflective and commensurate of what they're doing, you know what I mean? These ponds are in crisis mode, and, you know, if somebody's going down and clearing the vegetation because they want to look at the water, and they're getting rid of all vegetation, then the fines need to be commensurate of the damage that they're doing. And, you know, not, you know, there's, in one of the articles, like $300. Somebody that really, what's $300 to somebody that just wants to look at the water and, you know, it's just frustrating for that. I was wondering if some, in some of the shallow ponds and shallow areas, if there's any studies out there that show where aquaculture or kind of aquaponics is an effective way to try to draw and utilize some of the nutrients that are found on the bottom like phosphorus and nitrogen. Is there any studies out there or cost-effective ways of implementing something of more natural approach than chemicals?
So freshwater?
Yes, freshwater.
So they've, they've, they've had freshwater wetlands or floating wetlands, I think you're referring to. Their capability is limited based on their size and the size of the pond, and what they can actually remove. So they would have to be very, very large if you're trying to remove excess amounts, in particular San Tuit Pond. They can definitely remove something, but it's, it's really, it's short scale.
My thought was just, where that pond is so shallow, you know, you're talking eight feet, that maybe there's some sort of plant that can get down to that levels to really utilize that and help effectively, and if it's a matter of rotating it out, you know, and systematically try to move it and get areas targeted, then maybe it would work in some of the shallows, you know, because the chemicals really doesn't sit well with me, using chemicals to, you know, try to make the pond healthier. Thank you.
Mr. Chair.
Go ahead, Tom.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Ashley, we bring this term up every time we meet and you have this discussion. We talk about dredging, and it seems to be, everybody knows that that's going to have a drastic effect. If we can get the dredging permits and move the, this blue-green algae from below the surface, it will help immensely. We won't have to fight with all of, all of that muck on the bottom. And repeatedly, it just, it adds, like you said, Johns Pond, it showed it, the numbers have gone up drastically. The Mashpee, Mashpee River is dying. The muck on there is, it has to be at least two feet deep in some areas. What is the, what is the problem? What, is it the state that's giving us a problem? I know it becomes a hazardous material once it's removed, but can't they, have they talked about permitting of the dredging, a dredging program, and where can we put the spoils?
So we do have an ongoing study with the Army Corps of Engineers and the tribe with for San Tuit Pond. They did do a sediment analysis of multiple locations within the pond, and it was determined that certain sections of the pond could not be dredged due to the levels of arsenic in the northern section. There was parts of the southern section that could be dredged. It would remove an amount, but it wouldn't remove it to enhance water quality all around. But they were looking for habitat restoration. And the Army Corps of Engineers gentleman did approach me, and he was, he would love to come and speak to the board and let them know about the project.
And I bet you, we've been talking about dredging at least 15 years.
And, and I, I bet you, we've been talking about dredging at, at least 15 years, and we'd never moved anything any further than discussion.
It's disposal.
It just gets shut down every time we bring it up. But yet now the state's talking about it, but they're dragging their feet, nothing seems to be happening in a hurry. I don't know where the county government stands on this.
I think they have some inside.
Yeah, right. But I, I think that's one, gonna be one of the keys to, we can get a machine in there and remove a lot of this muck and get the tidal flow going again.
Well, for the pond specifically and for estuaries, the county dredge does have a new method of dredging.
Get the tidal flow, right.
And it's to, they remove it and de-water it off-site and then truck it away. It's very, very expensive, but now it can be done. It's a geotexile bag that they will put in the parking lot or in an area where they can lay it, and they'll pump it and fill it with the dredge spoils. With the amount of dredge spoils we have, we're talking eight feet deep. They've done it in locations where it's been like four. So we're talking at least a 75% hike on that, the project that they did, and if they'd even go for it, you'd have to get a trucking company to come in, we'd have to find a disposal site. It's not just one truck, it's multiple trucks. The whole 28 would be lined with dump trucks full of sediment.
You would think that after so many years, they'd come up with a plan, knowing that that it would have a positive effect.
It becomes a maintenance dredge.
It's just, it's one issue. If there's something that this board can do to help you along, or at the county level, I can help, if I can help you along at the county level, just, just let me know, I'd be more than happy to bring it up at the meeting. It's, it's a topic, a hot topic anyway, so it's, it's easy to get everybody talking.
And that's where the freshwater initiative comes in, that's the county level. So they can complete for phosphorus.
Thanks, Ash.
Very good presentation.
Ash, you're good. Just, again, all good comments to pile on. I agree the dredging, absolutely, but today's point, the storm run-off, if, even if we dredge, we still have to stop the problem. It's, and you can, if you drive around Santuitt Pond, you can actually see the elevation, the houses are up high, the ponds down low, it's, I mean, it looks pretty obvious. So those drains and the stormwater runoff, for me, is, I, I would think that's first priority, fix the runoff, you know, stop it where it is, and then we have to take care of what's there, and if it's dredging, if we can get there, but you're right, we've been talking about dredging forever, I don't know if it's possible. But any last second comments? If not, I'll let Ashley know.
How does, how does maintenance dredging in a riparian system affect the ecology of the environment?
There, there are certain areas that there's no life left on the bottom, like the Mashpee River, if we had a catchment basin, this is just theoretically, that we would dig to catch sediment and remove it a year after year instead of dredging the entire river. It's in increments that you're removing an amount, that would be a reduction in nitrogen in the overall. But it's just, you'd have to phase it, there's too much to do at all at once. Did I answer your question?
So, so, I mean, it's not a selective process, you're taking out everything from the bottom, so whatever life is there, you're, you're removing that as well, it's not just the sediments?
We do screen out for shellfish, they, they do have a screening method, even the, the county dredge does, too.
Thank you.
You mentioned the possibility of bylaws, and I know Selectmen Weeden mentioned fines. Is it appropriate for DNR to possibly have a group meeting with wastewater, conservation, health, waterways, planner, and whoever else, and I'll make sure that legal is available so that even though we're on a tight timeline, we might be able to get something in front of the Select Board for an addition to the October town meeting, so that we're not waiting until May?
Absolutely, yes, we will hold the meeting, I just wanna make sure that the state is in line with the town, because I think there is some restrictive fines at the state level that would trigger lobbyists to change, so we'll see what we can do.
Thanks, Ash.
Thank you.
All right, next up, before we get to public comment, is the report on Red Brook Road Culvert, Conservation Agent Andrew McManus.
I just have to set up the PDF here real quick. So as I'm getting this prepared, Drew McManus on the Town Conservation Agent, erring warden and tree warden. Just to touch on a couple of points that were brought up, questions on Ashley's presentation, Selectmen Weeden, you asked, you inquired about the fines and the $300 cap, which I, you know, couldn't agree more, is nothing more than a slap on the wrist, doesn't really teach a lesson. The, the issue with the fines is that they're under the state's non-criminal disposition statute, which means if you wanna increase those fines for wetland violations or, you know, violations that take place in national resources, you have to lobby at the state level to change that. And nobody wants to see that happen more than me, because I do agree that the fines, as they currently are, are just not effective, they don't teach any lesson. One of the things that I do in my position when I encounter a violation is I don't usually resort to fines, because I know it doesn't teach a lesson, and also it can lead to difficulty in trying to achieve compliance from that point moving forward. So what we do is we, we impose compliance measures that actually end up costing a lot more than $300 in fines. That's restoration, that's mitigation plantings, that's ongoing maintenance and monitoring of those plantings to make sure that not only they put in, but they're, they survive and they thrive. So that's kind of the approach that I take for that situation, but I agree, something needs to change. It's gonna take a, a pretty large effort, though, for the town, or any town, to increase those fines, but I highly encourage following up on that, so. And also, just to put it out there as well, the USGS, US Geological Survey, when it comes to PFOS, they are in the process of installing a number of monitoring wells around the upper quashnet bog system. So you've got the USGS starting up a, a pretty large and comprehensive water quality monitoring program for PFAS and PFOS, so I just wanted to put that out there, that's underway. And Selectman O'Hara, just to touch on your question about dredging of the Mashpee River, I know that there was a, a study done a while back on that, and I know it's always a discussion item, and nothing really seems to get done about it, but from my recollection of the study, was that if you're looking at the whole dredging initiative from a cost-benefit analysis, the benefit that you would reap from dredging the Mashpee River and trying to improve water circulation and dealing with the, the scum and the, and the nutrient loading, would really just push the problem further into Pompaness Bay and actually make conditions there worse, just due to the circulation in the bay itself. And I think that's been a major reason why you haven't seen a concerted effort to actually dredge the Mashpee River, just because the benefit that you would receive, given the cost involved, just doesn't quite equate. Not dismissing it, just putting it out there that that's what I've heard time and again. And then, as Ashley pointed out, for dredge spoils, it is insanely expensive to dispose of them. We looked at trying to use, excuse me, land, you know, existing abutting conservation land in the Mashpee River woodlands, but to change a use of conservation land at the state level is a Herculean effort, even if it is for the greater environmental good. It takes a lot of levels of approval to get something like that done, so to clear habitat to create space for dredge spoils, while it sounds entirely feasible, the likelihood of getting something like that approved and the precedent that it could, you know, possibly set for something like that is a big thing to overcome at the state level. So just to provide those feedback on that. So getting to my presentation, this is just to bring the Selectmen up to speed on what we've been doing, the history of the Red Brook Road Culvert failure, which happened roughly about two years ago. So if anyone's familiar with this area, this is a flooded bog system, let's see if I can find a good photo here. It's been a flooded bog area for literally decades, and you've got subdivisions surrounding it, so here, this is a good satellite image, so right here, this area, there's the culvert. Then you've got this, this is all abandoned, a series of abandoned cranberry bogs that were just flooded, and then the subdivisions were constructed and they kinda got accustomed to a quote-unquote waterfront view. So it's not a natural pond, it's, it's an impoundment. And when the culvert failed roughly two years ago, this whole system drained out, so you could only see the, the centerline stream, which was part of the old Red Brook system, and then the, the bog ditches that are common with any cranberry bog complex. So that was revealed, there was a lot of concern from the abutting residents, and justifiably so, about the condition. And I worked with the Conservation Agent from the Town of Falmouth and the two Town DPW departments to try and figure out what happened and how to address it as quickly as possible. And long story short, we ended up working with the Town of Falmouth to put sandbags out to try and stop the leaking wherever it was happening. We investigated the flashboards, pulled out all the old impoundment structures, boards, put sandbags down, and still noticed upwelling on the inside of the culvert, which pretty much told us, without having a comprehensive study done at the time, that the structure was being undermined and the water was coming through the concrete. It wasn't a condition of leaching through the flashboards or any other reason, it was structural with the concrete. So the towns applied for a grant from the Division of, Mass Division of Ecological Restoration to do a, a study, an assessment of the culvert, why it failed, and recommendations about what to do moving forward. So that study has been completed, it was done by Horsley-Witten Group, and we have much to thank to Betsy Gladfelter of Falmouth for helping us get this grant, for preparing the grant application, and using her experience with the Kunamesset restoration to help us get this grant. So the grant, which is part of this study that's up on the screen, I'm not gonna go through the whole study because it's very comprehensive, there's a link to it on our webpage, but I'll summarize basically what the grant covers, what the investigation revealed, which is essentially that it is indeed a structural issue, the water is upwelling from underneath the concrete structure, which tells us that road safety is the number one priority here. And in the report, they do make a recommendation, Horsley-Witten's recommendation, is to replace the failed culvert with an eight-foot-wide box culvert. To see something similar, if you go down Sampson's Mill Road by the Maupin Stables, it was a recently completed project, fairly recent, with the same type of situation, just an open culvert to allow free water flow without restricting. And Horsley-Witten did not recommend putting sandbags back down in the interim, but letting the water flow, so this way you've got uninhibited fish passage, wildlife passage. The issue is residents who were used to this condition for a number of years, that no longer have that condition, so it's, it's really just a wetland right now as opposed to a flooded bog. So we had a lot of concerns, particularly after the first failure happened, they've kind of waned over the months, but this is a, you know, a situation moving forward where it's likely that you're probably gonna hear from the, some of these residents about the town's ultimate recommendation to pursue, Horsley-Witten's assessment, and put in an unrestricted box culvert in this location to maintain open flow and not dam it up anymore. As far as, and then the road layout, this is important to point out, the road layout is owned by the towns. Bog structure.
That will bring that road back up.
That's part of the recommendation, is to raise the road up, too, because it is very susceptible to flooding, so that's obviously a hazardous situation that needs to be dealt with. So the upstream portion and the downstream portion, these are all privately owned, they're not owned by the town, they're association land or parts of people's private property. So that's gonna take, you know, fixing the culvert is just one part of the overall restoration, when ultimately what is best for the system is to return it back to the naturally flowing brook that it once was, for habitat, for nutrient, because every time you have this dammed up, you're collecting, you're accumulating nutrients like any other stagnant water body, and if it leaks again, or it fails again, all those nutrients go right down Red Brook into Hamlin Pond, and then you've got a whole new host of problems to deal with, which happened, the previous failure resulted in a shellfish bed closure in Hamlin Pond, because of all the nutrients that were locked up in this impoundment over the years. So that's another reason that you want it to be free-flowing, and you wanna look at ultimately restoring this area to the brook that it once was. So that's what the recommendation is in your memo, what the towns are working towards now, is using Horsley-Witten's recommendation in their report and pursuing this box culvert installation, and then working with the residents and trying to figure out a solution to restore as much of this system as we possibly can, because it's really what's in the best interest for water quality and wildlife habitat moving forward. So that's kind of the unknown at this point, but the towns are gonna move forward at this point for funding to do planning and permitting for the final design, and then construction costs to cover the actual construction of the culvert. So that's pretty much it in a nutshell, and I'll be happy to answer any questions.
Drew, is the raising of the road, is that, would that be part of this whole project?
It would be, yes, yeah, and that's in the report, as far as the actual degree of, you know, how high up it should be raised just to avoid future common flooding events. But yeah, that's part of the recommendation.
And you also need to, collaboration with the private property owners, is that?
Yes, yeah, and I've, I've attended their association meeting last September, where I kinda gave the layout of, you know, what was happening prior to the Horsley-Witten report being completed, and I was pleasantly surprised to see a lot of people there who, who originally seemed like were adamantly opposed to anything other than damming this area up again and returning the water feature to what it once was, to kinda having a change of heart, just given the forecast of water quality in town. I mean, you know, all you have to look back to is Brian Howes's presentation and Ashley's presentation, and it's fairly obvious that this is the best course of action, while completely understanding the conditions that they've been used to seeing for a number of years, decades even. If you really care about water quality and you wanna improve the situation, this is part of the puzzle, a big part. So it was good to see that kind of change of heart amongst some of those. I'll be attending another association meeting this coming September to go over this report and hopefully convince more people who may be on the fence or, or may be opposed at this point to what we're looking to do in the future to try and change their minds, so.
I'm ready.
I'm good, thank you.
I, I, I would encourage, you know, I, I know we have to prioritize which rivers we wanna address first and, and things, and, you know, but there are quite a few, and a huge initiative to have river restoration projects along bogs and things and those types of corridors. I know one thing that I continuously advocate for is, you know, these, a lot of these areas were, due to the hydrology supporting the industry, eastern white cedar bogs at one point in time, peat bogs and things of that nature. So, you know, indigenous plantings, you know, bull rush, cat nine tails and white cedar, you know, any of those types of plantings would be incorrigible to try to, you know, it tells me that nature's just reclaiming what once was, and, you know, eventually nature has a way of doing that, as much as we try to engineer everything to what we want, nature has a way of recapturing its original state.
This, and actually, if you drive by now and see it, it kinda looks like the future restoration would look like, where we'd, we're to, we to pursue that, which we are going to, hopefully, with the understanding and cooperation of the residents. But yeah, you're kind of getting a preview right now of what it would ultimately look like as a restored wetland system, so it's kind of unique in that way, the existing condition. But yeah, you're right, I mean, these systems are gonna, that's all they wanna do is return to their original state and function, so.
Thank you.
Everybody good? Thank you, Drew.
Thank you.
Appreciate it.
Sure.
All right, we're gonna jump right into public comment. Please consider everyone's time, there's a lot of people to speak, so there is a timer for three minutes. If you don't need three minutes, I'm sure everybody else will appreciate that. But we're gonna, first up actually is Michaela Colombo. But we're going to, first up actually is Michaela Columbo. Sorry Karen, you're up next, but her name was of yours.
I'm just checking the mic, I always have difficulty with this. Am I working?
Yep.
Okay. Good evening, Mr. Chairman and Select Board members. I'm Michaela Columbo, I live at Meadow Brook Road. I know there's a lot of public comments, so I'm going to be really brief. As you all know, I'm running for the vacant Select Board position. I've tried to reach you all by phone, and we've just not had the opportunity to catch up and to speak. And I understand it's a really, really busy time of year, people have a lot going on. So I wanted to come here tonight just to introduce myself personally. I look forward to working with each of you collaboratively and productively to solve the problems and the issues that confront Mashpee, and to work proactively to make Mashpee an even better place to live for all its residents. I'm happy to speak with any of you at any time to discuss my platform. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Karen Faulkner, please.
Good evening, members of the board. Mr. Collins, Wayne, Karen Faulkner, 205 Ashers Path West. I'm speaking tonight as a resident of Mashpee and not as a member of the Planning Board. I'm also speaking as a former attorney, and I apologize for my voice, I don't know, maybe I'm not going to be able to speak pretty soon, which might be a good thing. Okay. I reviewed the video of July 25th, the Select Board meeting, and I'd like to read to you in pertinent part what was said by each member of the board concerning the reorganization. J.C., John Cotton, "If we could also add a potential reorg to the agenda this evening to the Board of Selectmen?" D.W., David Whedon, "To my knowledge, the Clerk's office is looking into having a special election, so doing a reorg at that time after we fill the vacated seat would be appropriate." Carol Sherman, "We should do reorg now, and after the special election, we bring in a new reorg." Carol says to John, "You are asking to reorganize, put on the agenda?" You say yes. John says yes. Carol then says to John, "Second to edit to agenda." David says, "All in favor." Everyone answers aye, including David. But then David Whedon says, "Do we take this up at this time?" Carol says, "Yes, we do it now." Tom O'Hara, "I motion to move John Cotton as Chair." Carol says, "And David as Vice Chair and Tom as Clerk." They all voted, including David, yes. Prior to this reorganization, David was acting as Chair of the meeting for the first time. There was little discussion about the reorganization, and I believe, just reading that dialogue that I just read to you, David was blindsided by this hasty call for reorganization. It is the common practice in business, and especially in the legal community, to avoid even the appearance of impropriety in your conduct. I submit that the conduct and words of the Select Board in reorganizing on July 25th created in reasonable minds a perception that the three Select Board members, Cotton, Sherman, O'Hara, communicated with each other outside of the public board meeting, which is a violation of the open meeting law. Now, the communication did not have to be face-to-face, but rather a series of gatherings of separate members, each less than a quorum, to act uniformly to reach a quorum. The communication among the three board members could have taken the form as telephone, email, text message, or some other form. The vote to make John Cotton Chair, David Whedon Vice Chair, and Tom O'Hara Clerk circumvented the usual and customary practice of the board to allow the Vice Chair, which was David Whedon, to hold the chair until reorganization took place after the special meeting.
You're good.
Okay. John, Carol, and Tom, the optics of your vote to reorganize do not look good. In light of what I just said, and in a show of good faith, I think it would be appropriate for the board to move to rescind the decision of the board to reorganize, reinstate David Whedon as Chair, and reorganize the board after the October 4th special election.
Thank you, Karen. Richard Klein.
I yield my time, I would yield my time to Karen.
Okay, thank you. Is it Marjorie Hecht?
Can I stand here? Will you be able to hear me?
Yeah, I think that's okay, right?
It's Marjorie Hecht, Hoopole Road. That's okay. "As a Mashpee resident watching the Select Board meeting July 25th, I was shocked at the hasty and frankly rude behavior of members Cotton, Sherman, and O'Hara toward the Acting Chair. It looked like an orchestrated attack on a fellow board member and possibly a violation of the open meeting law. There was and is no perceptible urgency to reorganize. Why not wait until the special election? And why was Mr. Cotton so eager to become Chair and not have Mr. Whedon, a capable, intelligent, and honest elected official, as Chair? The actions July 25th of board members Cotton, Sherman, and O'Hara are shameful. They have done harm to all of Mashpee. I ask the board to rescind its vote for reorganization and wait to reorganize until after the special election." I was just a minute.
Thank you. Meredith Harris.
I'm Meredith Harris from Main Street in Mashpee, and I was one of the authors of a letter along with Michelle Michaela Columbo that appeared in the Mashpee Enterprise on August 5th. And I just wanted to read the letter, to have it recorded in the proceedings now. So the letter is as follows. "As residents of Mashpee, we should all be concerned with the reorganization that occurred at the July 25th meeting of the Select Board. This appeared to come as a surprise to Mr. Whedon, the Vice Chair, who had properly assumed responsibility of running the meeting as Chair after learning that Mr. Gottlieb had resigned. Typically, reorganization of the Select Board occurs following an election. Yet on July 25th, three Select Board members, Ms. Sherman, Mr. Cotton, and Mr. O'Hara orchestrated what appeared to be a coordinated reorganization of the board. This seemed to come as a surprise to Mr. Whedon, the Vice Chair, who had just recently heard of the resignation of Mr. Gottlieb that morning. When local government officials appear to make decisions outside of open meeting town, democracy is at risk. Like most residents of Mashpee, we are not Select Board members, and we don't know for sure what happened. We do know this: David Whedon has served on the board for four years, and David has received many more popular votes for his position than other candidates. And while we know that the popular vote does not determine the role of Chairman or Chairperson, how odd that Mr. Whedon has not had this opportunity. At the July 25th meeting, Mr. Whedon was overlooked as prospective Select Board Chair by Ms. Sherman, Mr. Cotton, and Mr. O'Hara. Shamefully, these three Select Board members conducted themselves as though Mr. Whedon, the interim Chairman, Chairperson, was not even at the table. Was this a gross lack of judgment, an attempt to control future agendas, or a way to ensure that a member of the Wampanoag tribe did not serve as Chair? Regardless of Sherman, Cotton, and O'Hara's reasoning for commandeering the reorganization of the Select Board, the outcome for hard-working and thoughtful residents is the same. Mr. Whedon, who is a very prepared member of the Select Board who seeks to do what is in the interest of Mashpee, who has knowledge and concern for the environment during these critical times, and who appears to have no hidden agenda, was overlooked. Mashpee needs David Whedon's leadership skills, knowledge, and integrity. We do not need politicians who are elected to represent the entire Mashpee community to be, who are to be elected to represent the entire Mashpee community, to be driven by whatever personal agendas they may have. This unscheduled and unposted agenda item that resulted in the speedy reorganization of the Select Board is a travesty, and that should move Mashpee residents to question the motivations and decisions of some Select Board members. How do we trust this group to move forward?" So that, again, this was written by Michaela Columbo and myself, Meredith Harris. Thank you for your time.
Pat Flynn.
I'll stand because I sit all day. Good evening, Board Selectmen. Mr. Collins, Mr. Taylor, everyone here, everyone who's, wherever the cameras. I'd like to talk a little bit about Santuah Pond. I'd like to thank Ms. Fisher for her presentation on the pond. At the same time, you have two articles before you on the October warrant proposed by DNR to limit power boats on Santuah Pond. I'd ask you not to consider those articles. I ask you that because the pond primarily gets power boats, power boats primarily in the fall, when this, when the phosphorus issue is no longer an issue, and it's, pond supports fishing derbies, there's a lot of fishing that goes on there in the fall. If you go down any Sunday morning in September and October, you'd see that. The other thing is, we've talked about Santuah Pond now for well over 20 years, we've done study after study after study. I bought my house in 1984, the house was already there, it wasn't new. I bought my house in 1984, I have deed rights to the pond, according to my deed. When I bought the house, at the foot of Lantern Lane, there was a beach. If you go down Lantern Lane today, you'll see a wall, in the center of the wall is an opening, that was the center of the beach, so the beach went both ways. The Home Loan Association went defunct in late 1992, and the property reverted to the town. At that point, the town ignored it, like it does most things at that end of town, and that's why the property now is overgrown with trees. And at one time, it was a beach, I'm sure that sand helped filter out some of the water running down the hill, because as Mr. Cotton pointed out, as has been pointed out by others, it is a steep, you're on the pond, the sides are rather steep. So I'm sure that the beach that was there helped filter some of that water that came rushing down Lantern Lane. I'm not sure that forbidding power boats or limbering horsepower on the pond is going to do any good. I think at this point, we know the issue is the sediment in the pond. We know the issue is the sediment in the pond. Hi, the issue is the sediment in the pond. We need to do something about the sediment in the pond, quit applying Band-Aids, quit having study, we're having another study, we're going to do another study, we bought a bog, converted it to a wetland, we're studying it. We've done a lot of studies, tons of studies, we've been studying the damn thing forever. It's time to do something. I ask that you not prohibit the power boats, but let's find something and do something. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Flynn. George Chucky-Green.
Good evening, members of the Board of Selectmen. I'm here tonight because everybody at the table at least should know that I was a Selectman for nine years. And the process that happened the other night was, in my mind, fairly disgusting, and as some have said tonight, it makes it look like somebody had a plan, that something was going that shouldn't be happening. It's always a problem when the appearance of impropriety happens, whether it is valid or not. So I mean, as a Selectman, it was always the next on the election that was going to be the Chairman for that year going forward. I was Chairman one year. I thought that was a wonderful experience, first of all. I think that David could have done a fine job. But then I come back to the other point, we're going to have another election in a short term. So that, to me, makes no sense at all, that we restructure the board twice in the same year. That makes no sense at all to me. It makes me think, and I'm somebody that doesn't think this way normally, but it looks more like the board had something against a Wampanoag person being appointed Chairman. Like I said before, true or not, the appearance is more time, the vision that everyone sees, that's what everyone thinks. And as long as the town is going to think like that, the town is going to create divisions itself from the town and the tribe. Over my whole term as Selectman, my goal was to put the town and the tribe together and make a one Mashpee. Now, we're going to take and we're going to dam it for a couple of months. When this could all come back in a couple of months and we could talk about it, there'd be time to discuss it, there'd be time to work on it and find out if what we want is what we want. You never know, you might have another tribal member running for one of those seats. That's a good time for the buzzer, I guess. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Green. Jane Marie Stevenson.
I'm Jane Marie Stevenson, I live at 135 Sampson's Mill Road. And I'm representing my own view, not that of the Mashpee Inclusion and Diversity Committee which I chair. That being said, I volunteered to serve on this committee because I feel it is vital to our town and to our society that we acknowledge our diversity and strive to include those who have been underrepresented, particularly in positions of leadership. Mashpee, we know, in particular, is unique, that we are situated on the tribal land of the Wampanoag people. Relationships have been strained over the years, but I have been heartened by the more recent effort to build bridges. In our schools, for sure, adaptation of our new town seal, meetings with tribal leaders, land acknowledgements, to name just a few. And it's always important to me that we come from a positive place and that we live by the motto, "Find the good and praise it," and I wanted to say that. Personally, I have strongly supported the election of Mr. David Whedon to the Select Board, because I appreciate the perspective he can bring and does bring as a tribal member, not just his beliefs, but his leadership skills. I am therefore befuddled and saddened that the Select Board did not take the opportunity to appoint Mr. Whedon as Acting Chair after the unexpected resignation of Mr. Gottlieb, at least until the upcoming special election in October, and even though he held the position of Vice Chair. Regardless of any justification of the board members that may have, regardless of any justification the board members may have for their decision, even if it is unintended, the optics are not good. It feels to me like an affront to Mr. Whedon and the tribe. In my opinion, this is a setback in our efforts to restore a level of leadership that the tribe once held, and strengthen the tribe's participation in the ongoing growth of our community. If anything, Mr. Whedon will be given the experience of serving as Chairperson, even if for less than three months, and I believe prove himself worthy of the position in the future when the board reorganizes with a full board of five members, and I thank you. And I thank you.
Mary Wagon. Mary Wagon.
Hi, good evening. I'm here today as the Chair of the Planning Board. I'd like to give you an update on our local comprehensive plan and ask for an update on the Community Preservation Program. The Planning Board continues to work on the update of the town's local comprehensive plan, and since I gave my last update, I would like to report that we held a workshop on July 28th at the Library on Built Systems, about 50 people attended that. And we also had a focus group at Southport on July 26th, and about 70 people attended there. We are scheduled to have a focus group with the Mashpee-Wampanoag Tribe on September 21st. I hope everyone can attend then. That will be at the Tribal Government Center. Also, a focus group with our business community on August 24th, a focus group with parents of school-aged children sometime in September, after school starts, a focus group with our local environmental groups, and a virtual workshop that will be open to all, just to capture anybody that have, we haven't seen or heard from. We were also going to launch a community survey sometime in September, so stay tuned. I want to thank everybody who's participated in the local comprehensive plans update so far, and of course, the Planning Board encourages all residents to participate. The next item is about the Community Preservation Program. The Planning Board voted in support of an application to the purchase of eight acres of open space. I believe the address is 751 Main Street, Route 130. I understand that the Conservation Commission also voted in support of this application, and the application was submitted by the Planning Board and the Conservation Department. So typically, the Community Preservation Committee convenes when an application is submitted, and we have, we have convened at all different types, times of the year. I would like to know when the Community Preservation Committee will be convened. We typically meet on Thursdays, usually, I don't know if it's the third or the fourth Thursday of the month. And I think it is important, in light of the presentation that we had about the ponds tonight, because that land purchase may be an important piece to our clean water initiative. It is near, if I'm correct, it is near Mashpee Wakeby Pond. So it, it is something that is time-sensitive, and I'm hoping that we can get moving, just like we're thinking of adding some more bylaws to the October town warrant. I'm hoping that we can consider this land purchase at that time as well. Thank you.
Thank you, Mary. Yvonne Courtney.
Good evening. Thank you for hearing me. Oh, I should say, Yvonne Courtney Press McLean. I'm proud to say I've been a resident of the Town of Mashpee since 1974, have attended many meetings, and I was very disappointed at the last meeting. First of all, I'd like to talk directly to Mr. Whedon. I think he, someone has contributed to the Select Board. I think he brings a great deal of wealth and experience for a young person. He, he has been on the Planning Board, he brings experience and knowledge. What he hasn't learned, he has learned. He has contributed to the board. And as a, a member of the community, I think we should be proud. Secondly, the fact that Mr. Whedon was the vice chair, he should have been considered. I was very upset because it seemed as if people are on the board or Select Board are not considering people with experience lately. People with no experience are being appointed to the board and, and without any knowledge of the town, they have not been in the town that long, but they come in, they get selected to the board, you ignore the people with experience. Mr. Whedon was the vice president. What should have happened? Well, it was, the resignation of the other Selectman was abrupt. There should have been a decision by the board to meet in the future, have a discussion when the new election was coming, have maybe discuss with Mr. Whedon whether he would like or not to be chairman. The way it was handled was disrespectful, in my personal opinion, and this is why I'm talking, and I thought it was necessary for me to come to board to tell everyone what I thought of what happened. I think Mr. Whedon should have been given the consideration, he was already the vice chair, it was a couple of months before we have an election, and then the board could have had a chance and give Mr. Whedon a chance if he wanted to be, maybe he didn't want to be. But the way it was handled was totally disrespectful. This was not the first time that Mr. Whedon has been confronted by a member of a previous board in a very disrespectful manner, because Mr. Whedon attended a meeting which he didn't think that was appropriate. Again, I think it was a disrespect to Mr. Whedon. And I hope in the future that the board will take on the responsibility, when you are elected to an office or appointed at an office, you have an obligation to be able to know how to conduct a meeting, follow procedure, and do it in a respectful way. So I hope in the future, we do not have to come before this Selectment and make any comments about how a meeting was conducted. Thank you.
Chairman Brian Whedon.
Hi, good evening. I'm here as a resident, Brian Whedon, 133 Main Street. I'm not here as the chairman of the tribe because I can't say I'm sorry for what might come out throughout this discussion. And I'm also not here because we have the same last name as Vice Chairman Whedon. I'm here because of everyone else that spoke, and I just want to remind people that have been here and the residents that have been here, I'm not sure how long some of you have been here that are in these positions, but there was a point in time in the tribe and the town's history where we were at war with each other. And that was around the time that we were going for our land suitcase and everything else like that, and I just want all of the residents and everyone to know that you three, when you did that vote, you, you started that up again. You've created problems and tensions between the tribe and the town. And I know it's all good because you just want your good Indians to just sing and dance or do whatever you want to do, or you just need us when you need us to vote for you. But at the end of the day, we've been here longer than anyone put together, you could put everyone in this room together, we've been here longer. All these maps and everything that Ashley's shown, Wampanoags were in leadership before the overdevelopment happened, okay? It was when everyone else started moving into this town that the overdevelopment started happening because there was no smart growth, okay? So the Wampanoags were trying to save this place, and now we're sitting here having to fight for our kids and our future generations because that's what it's about. And I know for a fact that David is a humble person, he doesn't really want to be in it. I don't know if that's something that he wants to do because he's a humble person. He, he's fine with being the vice chair, but the opportunity wasn't even given to him. Anyone knows, when you're the vice chair, you sit there and you step up to the plate. Would he want to step up to the plate? We wouldn't even know. That could be something he didn't want to take on, but as the vice chair and the people that we elect, we elected him for a reason. So all of that to say, this board leads by example. If the Conservation Commission, school committees and everything else like that can't take votes without us putting it on the agenda item, what makes this board think that they can take a vote and violate, whether it's open meeting law, policies or whatever else like that, or even Roberts Rules of Order? If you're going to run and try to run the town, you should know what you're doing and what we're talking about here. Because the problem right here, right now, is the fact that these are things that I don't want to see the tribe go through, and it's sad that the person that left us was one that a lot of you guys leaned on when we're talking about environmental issues. I don't see much of you contributing to the conversations like I see David contributing to the conversations, okay? And that's the part he cares, okay? And that's, that's the reason why we elected him. That's why you said the popular vote, he gets the most votes. George Chucky Green was the last tribal member, okay, to ever serve in that position. We finally get a tribal member back and you're trying to shut us out again? So I want to say all of that to say that you three are the ones that caused this tension and this issue right now, and I just want to let you know that it's not over because half of this room is tribal citizens and community members that support them, and I'll remember this when it's up for reelection because we know how it goes. John and Tom, you're not up until the following year. Not one of you are up. And if we're going to follow the past practice, this is not the past practice. And if it smells like a fish and looks like a fish, well, Wampanoags are some of the best fishermen, and this smells fishy.
Lynn Barbie.
Lynn Barbie, Surf Drive. I want to thank Chairman Brian Whedon for his comments, and I want to point out to everybody that on page 18 of this booklet by the Chamber of Commerce, he has a very eloquent statement, which I also agree with. And like others, I had written a letter to the editor, but since I know that not everybody in this town has figured out that we really need to support our local newspaper, I'm going to read my letter to the editor as well. On July 18, the Mashpee Select Board held what seemed to be a generally productive meeting with the Wampanoag Tribal Council. All there agreed that the meeting was overdue. It ended with plans for ongoing collaboration and cooperation between the town and the tribe. Select Board Chair Gottlieb clearly led the meeting with the tribe in conjunction with Board Vice Chair and Tribal Member David Whedon. Tribal Chairman Brian Whedon, Vice Chairman Carlton Hendricks, and other Tribal Council members spoke forcefully on the issues and agreed to ongoing collaboration. A week later, on July 24th, Mr. Gottlieb, a longtime Select Board member and then chairman, abruptly resigned from the board. Then, one day later, on July 28th, the three other remaining Select Board members forced Vice Chair David Whedon out of the chairmanship of the board. Standard procedure is to reorganize the positions upon a new election, which Mr. Whedon explained, but Mr. Cotton, Ms. Sherman, and Mr. O'Hara abruptly called for an immediate reorganization. Mr. Whedon clearly showed his surprise, and citizens present and those watching remotely were stunned. This is an insult to Mr. Whedon, to the tribe, and to all residents. It brings shame to the town. How can any of us trust the Select Board if the majority cannot respect the tribal member and the standard practice of waiting to reorganize? What is the point of having a Select Board acknowledgement, in quotes, statement on Mashpee as land of the Wampanoag? The action of these three members drowns out any well-meaning words. They certainly aren't concerned with the best interests of the town, only their own power. There are copies of this on the, the shelf outside. Thank you.
Paula Peters. Paula Peters.
Hi, I'm Paula Peters, 25 Devon Street. I think you guys know me. I hate this process because we're standing here, we're mad at you, we're really mad at you. I'm talking to Tom and John and Carol. We're really mad, and all we can do is stand here and say how mad we are, and you're nodding and looking the way you're looking, and we have no idea what's going on in there. Have no idea. So I hate this process. And I know something that's probably going to come out of this from you guys afterwards, you'll say, and I've, I've heard perhaps this is justification is, well, David could have put himself forward. David could have said, hey, wait a second, I want to nominate myself to be the chairman. Well, guess what? His nephew is right about him, he, he's a humble man, but it's also culturally inappropriate for him to do that. He did what he was supposed to do as a Wampanoag man, as a Wampanoag warrior even. So don't throw that up in his or our face when this is all going down. I think I'm done.
All right, that's it for the public comment. We're moving on to discussion approval of Monday, July 18th, 2022, special meeting, Monday, July 25th, 2022, regular and executive sessions, Thursday, July 28th, 2022, and special meeting Wednesday, August 3rd, 2022, special meeting.
So move.
Do I have a second?
I wasn't at the 18th meeting. Discussion of the minutes.
Approval of the minutes.
Approval of the minutes.
Is that a second? Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye, but I refuse myself from the 18th meeting.
From the 18th. All, if ours, approval of the minutes.
I'd like to take five minutes and, and have a conversation with the board.
Adding how we...
We have to follow the agenda? He wants five minutes to have an internal discussion amongst the board.
You can't.
No.
To that, to that point, Tom, even if we approve the minutes, it, it took place? That doesn't mean that we can't open up a new discussion about anything else, about anything else we want to do. It just, I mean, all we're doing is validating the minutes took place. Okay? So that was all in favor except for the exception of the 18th, correct?
Yes.
Okay. Appointments and hearings, right? Discussions and approval of the following appointments to the Cultural Council. Lee P. Smith, Member-at-Large, term expires September 30th, 2025.
Is Lee Smith here?
Probably not. Lee Smith, no? They're probably, I don't know, I'm assuming they were not asked even to attend.
Motion to approve Lee Smith to the Cultural Council Committee as a Member-at-Large with the term expiring September 30th, 2025.
I second.
Thank you. I have a first and second. All in favor?
Aye.
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 Cultural Council Member-at-Large Wendy Bornstein.
I'm just catching up here.
Okay.
Discussion approve, oh, I'm sorry, that's right. So Wendy Bornstein, Member-at-Large, term expires September 30th, 2023.
Motion to approve this member also, they both come from, have relative past experience with the Center for the Arts, and I feel as though they would be an asset to the Cultural Council. Motion to approve.
Second.
All in favor?
Yes.
Aye.
Aye. Discussion approval of resignation of Waterways Commission Albert Wickel, term expires June 30th, 2024.
I second. I make a motion to accept Mr. Wickel's resignation with regret and to send a letter.
Okay, I have a first and second with letter of regret. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Unanimous. So next up, I believe, is discussion approval of temporary sign permit Seaside Le Mans. I'm assuming that they're not here, but this is pretty standard, correct? Mr. Collins?
Nothing's changed.
No exceptions? It's all the normal?
That's correct.
A motion and approval of a temporary sign permit for the Seaside Le Mans.
Second.
I have a first and second for the sign permit for Seaside Le Mans. All in favor?
Aye.
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 Thank you. Communications and correspondence. All good? Old business, new business. Discussion and approval of the intermunicipal agreement between the Town of Mashpee and the Mashpee Water District.
Essentially, this is the renewal of the existing terms and conditions. It's recommended for renewal, and it's been looked at by Town Council.
Nothing's changed?
Just the dates.
Just the dates.
The dates have changed.
And this is, I'm assuming revisions as far as them getting involved with our helping with assisting with our billing and for future, that's...
It's, it's for support staff, yes.
Okay.
Motion to approve intermunicipal agreement between the Town of Mashpee and the Mashpee Water District for the year, August, for the year 2022.
Second.
All right. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All right. And now it's discussion and approval of recommendations of draft two of the October 17, 2022 Town Meeting Warrant. I don't, this, if, I'm assuming everybody had a chance to dig into this, and there's obviously a few articles in here. You know, at this point, we are going to have, let me see, I believe actually we're going to have probably three or four representatives to discuss.
Whoever you would like in here will get, there are a couple of larger articles that may need some explanation and maybe want the public to know a little bit more about.
Yeah, I mean, there's, there's a lot to this. I mean, it goes on and on and on.
There's a lot of definitions and a lot of changes.
So I don't know if, how the board feels, if you want to, do you want to go through this at this time, or do you want to kind of dig into it one by one when we have the people presenting just next week?
I didn't, I wasn't able to get through the entirety of it. I was very caught up on the front end, you know, where you have zoning articles changing and things. You know, quite a few questions to those. I'm wondering if, you know, other relevant departments and boards have all, if everyone's in agreement on what's being proposed. So I guess, you know, having those folks present so that if there are any questions, we're able to ask them, get an answer, and speak to them just to ensure that, you know, there's consistency amongst all relative parties, that, you know, this is the direction we want to go in.
Sure.
I would weigh my vote heavily on their opinions.
Sure, we'll have whoever you want here to answer any questions that the board or any member of the board has relative to any article.
It's this planning, it's planning.
Planning Board.
Planning Board.
Have they gone through the articles as of yet? Have you gone through the articles, Mary?
We submitted, the Mary Wagon, Chair of the Planning Board, we submitted that article to you after lengthy discussions.
Okay.
It looks like Town Council reviewed it too. But we really need Evan to come and explain it. It's all so that we can still participate in the flood insurance policy, insurance program that's funded by the federal government. So there's some tweaks we had to make, replacing our existing floodplain bylaw with an updated one on recommendation by the state and the county. Okay?
And Andrew had a chance to chime in on it? Andrew McManus as Conservation Agent?
I don't know. But I will, I will make sure that happens.
Yeah, I mean, so it looks like, I mean, we have, you know, natural resources, I mean, we can...
We can start.
We can have, you know, natural resources, have them come in. Planning, because, you know, if Mary could come back and...
And Evan, he said Evan needs to be.
We've got articles submitted by the Treasurer, the Finance Director, the Fire Department, Planning Board, Public Works, Library Trustees, DNR, and Community Preservation, and then we have the petitioned article. So if I could suggest, Mr. Chair, that any board member who has any questions at this particular time, we will make sure that that department head or the respective submitting party to the article is here at the next meeting. We just need to know what you may have questions on and what the scope of that is so we can try to brief the...
The person coming in.
The person coming in as to what you're looking for.
Okay, so why don't we start?
If there's...
To go article, we'll start it with Article One to see if the town will vote to appropriate and transfer the sum of 1,480,000 amount to be determined from the wastewater stabilization fund to the temporary borrowing outside two and a half or take any other action related there to, submitted by the Town Treasurer.
There's nothing we can do there because it's amount to be determined, right?
Are you going to read all of these?
That's what I'm saying.
No, no, I just thought we'd start.
No, I, you know, but I don't know how we, I mean, personally, I don't know how we can even start to read them because...
Exactly, because we don't have...
Well, even the ones that are, that are quick and easy.
Right.
Some of them are six pages, and those ones we're not going to get into because we don't have answers. The other ones, we don't have numbers finalized, so we can't approve them anyways. So...
So who do you want to have come in?
So I, obviously, DNR, right? DNR, planning.
Okay, hold on, let me just get the list here. DNR, planning.
Conservation Agent.
Conservation.
And Treasurer.
Okay, I've got all those four. Any others?
Missing?
And what was that listed?
And DNR.
DNR, yeah.
Probably will cover, I mean, there's a couple, there's a lot.
You know, if, if we can put together comments and send them via email to you directly.
What I would respectfully request is that the individual Select Board Member that has a question directed to me, not amongst yourselves.
No CC, right, okay.
And then I will just take your question, relay it to the party coming in, and then we'll be here in public session for everybody to hear.
Right. Good.
That sounds good.
And CC, the Assistant Manager.
So motion to table.
Do I...
The discussion until the next meeting?
Yeah, so it is...
Correct.
Second.
All in favor?
Yes.
Yes.
And just for clarity, we will have all of the questions from the Select Board Members available to the public at that meeting. Yes?
Mr. Chair, under the additional topics, this space is reserved for topics that the Chair did not reasonably anticipate would be discussed. I'd like to ask that the Chair consider a reconsideration of the actions taken at the last meeting. The basis for that is that I relied heavily on the statements of the longstanding board members. There was misrepresentation of the information and facts at that time. I was clearly nervous, and the subsequent article that was in the newspaper, I felt as though there was comments that suggest, you know, the collusion, well, I know for a fact there was collusion, and there was misstatements in the paper that I'd like to discuss at this time.
So...
You're asking to put it on the agenda?
Correct.
Mr. Whedon, I just, I'm not against what you're saying, if you don't mind, if I'd like to just speak real quickly. You just made a second statement saying that there was collusion. I just want to clarify, I am telling you there wasn't. But, excuse me, please, can we, we're having a serious conversation, it just, I can't have disruption like that, please. So I would entertain a motion to add a reorg discussion. And I would need a motion to consider a reorg at this time.
So move.
Second.
All right. So now, at this point, we can discuss potential reorg, and can I make a motion?
I'd like to explain, I'd like, there's a few things that I just need clarity on. There's a few things that I need clarity, clarity on, you know, I keep hearing that there was no discussion. And here, you know, Carol, that's at 8:17 in the morning, you called me on Monday morning.
I did.
The call is for 11 minutes and 23 seconds.
Yes.
We didn't talk about the elephant on, of the curtains, we talked about the elephant on the table.
I told you that you...
You were going on, and you told me straight out.
I said you were going to chair the meeting.
You did not say, you're going to sit there and, and, and straight face lie to me and say that I did not ask you. You told me that, that we, I had to, I had to facilitate a meeting, Andrew wasn't coming in. You said that, that, that we're going to have to reorganize the board, and I said, well, why would we do that? This is the conversation. I said, why would we do that? Because they're going to have, they're going to, I hear that they're going to do a special election, and why wouldn't we do it at that time? And you said, you said, I'm talking right now.
No.
You said, verbatim, you said, we have discussed it, and we feel that we need to reorganize the board now. You said that!
I never did.
You said that! You did!
Get quiet, please.
I stopped you. I stopped you.
Mr. Klein, please leave.
Listen, I'm talking. Please address the table. I, I asked you.
Can we just have one talking at a time?
Yes, please, I'm going to finish. Everybody else has a chance to talk, I'm going to have my moment to talk right now.
We're allowing you, it's just...
And Carol, I said, wait a minute, because as I understand it, I'm the Chair. As an interim, as an interim with Andrew stepping down, I'm the interim Chair. Where are these conversations happening that I'm not a party to? I asked you that, and you did not answer the question. You're going to sit there and lie to me and say that you didn't have that conversation with me?
I had a conversation with you, I called you...
That wasn't said!
No, it was not.
For 11 minutes, we, look, what are we talking about?
I'll tell you what I said. I said, David, be prepared, you're going to chair the meeting tonight. And you said, okay? And I said, we will get more information later in the day and at the meeting on how to go forward with Debbie. And Debbie said she emailed you.
Not the conversation.
That's the conversation I had.
You said it more than once, you said that we discussed it, and I said, whoa, whoa, slow, take a breath.
I never said that.
I said, you have to...
You never did say that.
I was in the room, my girlfriend was in the room, and she heard me talking you off a ledge because you all wound up.
No, I did not say that to you.
Straight lie, straight lie. And everybody saw what they saw.
Can we...
Everybody saw what they saw. It was too succinct for it not to be discussed. People are stupid.
David, I'm sorry.
And wait a minute, I'm not done. John, in your statement in the paper, your statement, you said everything was on the up and up. Everything was legal. You know, I was, I was voted into the position by the members of my peers, and your very next statement, your very next statement was, there was ample time, David, he didn't have to entertain the motion, and if he wanted the position, he could have nominated himself. So there's only one of two things. There's only one of two things. This board, all three of yous, you don't think I'm qualified to do the job, or as a person, the only person of color on the board, I don't deserve the same opportunity that everyone else does.
David, stop it.
How do you not, how do you not feel that way? How do you not feel that way? I'm the only color, I'm the only person of color on the board, Carol.
And that's wrong. That's wrong, David.
Everyone else has been, Carol, you asked me, to your credit, you asked me when you were up, you came to me and you didn't, did we not have that conversation? Or you're going to call me a liar on that one? You asked me, do you want, do you want to be Vice Chairman of the Board? I'm up for reelection, and I'd like you to be, did we not have that conversation?
Yes.
Yes, we did. And when Andrew was up last year, and Andrew came to me, came to me... Listen, I'm talking, one second, I'll be done in a minute. Andrew, Andrew came to me out of courtesy in, in 2021, before the reorganized organization in that year. And he said, David, you know, we're up for reelection, so it's the habit of the board to, you know, it's that time, you know, would you like to be Chair this year? You know, I kind of like to be the Chair in 2022, you know, but I'll leave it up to you, it's your choice. And I, at that time, declined. You know, I have a lot going on, I, I, I'm not looking for more work, I'm not somebody that seeks titles. And I said, you know, I'm fine, you know, you take it, I'm fine with that. But he asked. He asked. He came to me and asked. Where was the conversation? John, after all this stuff come out in the paper, my phone's blowing up, can we talk before the meeting? Can we talk before the meeting? You know, and you have my number?
Did I go to the paper?
Did you call me before the reorg at the, at the previous regular meeting? You didn't call. No, you didn't. You talked to Carol, because she said you discussed it.
Did I?
She said you discussed it, Carol.
I did not, and we did not.
You said you discussed it.
That was a lie. I'm not going to discuss this anymore.
All I'm saying is, there's only two things, either, either I'm not capable, or I'm, I'm, I'm not entitled to the same opportunities. So which member's going to nominate me to the Chair position? Which one of you? Don't all jump at once.
David, stop.
I nominate myself.
Trying to speak as the Chairman of the Board. I'm trying to speak, you understand?
We did not talk, and that's terrible to say.
Tom's talking now, Carol. So...
Go ahead, just Tom, just, let me get it wrapped up.
I got, the way my day went on that...
Tom, you got to get closer to the mic.
Is the, is that, all I knew is that we were coming in for the meeting, someone said, are you looking, I can't say exactly what it was, but there, there was some talk, are we going to reorganize tonight? And I'm like, I have no clue. I mean, I have no clue what was going on.
We didn't know we were going to do it until John asked to put it on the...
So how did everybody come to an agreement on John?
Because John asked to put it on while you were sitting right there. He asked to put it on the agenda.
But he never said he wanted to be Chair.
We got to have one talking at a time.
Let me, let me, let me finish, okay? So I, I didn't have any, any knowledge of anything that was going on, other than there was a motion that was made. And, and what I, and I'll tell you what I thought. I thought that you had, everybody had already discussed this, and, and I, I didn't know anything that was going on. So when, when they said, does anybody want to make a motion? And I was like, then this must be a prearranged, because I would have thought you would have had, I would have had some communication, but John, I, I thinking that you were happy with where you were at, at, at the...
As Vice Chair.
Vice Chair. And, and you were happy with that, and, and not, and you were moving forward, and John had more experience, and I don't want, I have no intention, I was not looking forward to any board membership, I was happy to be a Selectman, I'm not looking for anything else. And I felt that John was, he had, he had done a good job just previously as the Chair, and I said, well, they must be, this must be something that was, they must be talking about, while they must be looking at each other and making the decision. David, if I had known that you had an interest, I would have, I would have supported you to run. But you, you just didn't have anything, you didn't bring anything to me that said, well, I'm interested, I'm just like, I had no clue.
I think it's time, just...
If you want to run at this stage of the game, if you want, if you want to run again, I, I would, I would withdraw if we could withdraw and let you...
Oh, Tom, we already have...
So to, to that point, though, I, I, I declined in previous years, but I was asked, you know, this happened the day before, so I didn't understand the urgency of reorganizing the board anyway. I really didn't understand it. And I suggested, can't we kick this out to the next meeting? Can't we kick it out to the next meeting? Why does it have to be done tonight?
You did say that, David.
Why? And then the very next day, you were, you were self-appointed to the CPC, it was, it was changed on the website.
He's not appointed.
It was on the CPC, it was, I said.
Oh, no.
No.
Don't go there.
And I'm like, whoa. You know, I don't understand what's going on.
All right, so...
That's tonight.
Look at the website, his name's already on it.
All right, I was not self-appointed. Now, I seen all that flying, to, to be fully honest, I called Mr. Collins today to say, I don't know what's going on, but no assignments have been done, and if you read all these Facebook posts, but I don't get them personally, okay? I, and this is, I'm telling you from the, I'm, I'm telling you 100% honesty what's going on.
Mr. Chair.
I, I'm sorry, I got to clear this up. There was posts on Facebook that I am not party to those groups, okay? But they were shared with me that said, I don't, if I kind of read it, the website's kind of fuzzy, but it looks like he's assigned to all the liaisons and, including CPC. I did not assign myself to any of the liaisons. In fact, that's why I had the conversation with Mr. Collins today, because I didn't know what was going on, because I never discussed liaisons at all and assignments, because in my heart, I didn't want to reassign any assigned, any liaisons. And that's why I asked Mr. Collins today to say, can we defer all the liaisons with the exception of CPC and CIP unless they need a liaison representative, they will contact the town manager, and that's how they were going to, and then we would get a representative, one of us.
What was your response when, when, when Marcia McGuinness asked at the Wednesday meeting, when she asked, you know, what happened, and you said you'd give a response? What she posted on Facebook was that you told her that there was an important matter that needed to be signed off on at the CPC level. That's what she, that's what she gave for your response?
No.
To, to that question? But it sounded like it was a one-on-one call, you addressed her instead of addressing her instead of addressing the public.
Dave, I was slammed in all of Facebook about, that I knew about CPC. I didn't know anything about CPC. They brought it up on social media. I know nothing, cause I didn't even know about this development. I don't know anything about the parcel. And they are correct. I didn't know anything about it. Because it was, it was, it wasn't a-
It looks really fishy. Cause she asked, she asked at that meeting in upstairs.
She asked about it, and I told her.
She asked it. And then, and you said you, you responded a later date.
I, because-
Like, I think within forty-eight hours, she posted and explained what the response was. But it was a one-on-one call. I mean, it's on, everybody to see, it's on the-
And to be hon, if you, and it, just to be clear, I called Marcia, and I said, Marcia, just to be clear, you repeated everything in our conversation, but we never talked about CPC. I still don't know what you're talking about, the CPC. And that's when I reached out to Mr. Collins. And I'll allow Mr. Collins to speak, because, and I'm, cause Dave, I'm not, I'm telling you the truth. But-
David, and I'm telling you the truth, too.
Mr. Collins.
You know, that, that evening, you know, the two of you were interrupting the whole night, like, you know, jumping on every, every mistake I made, the whole night. Tom, you didn't, you didn't, you know, you didn't, you weren't a party to that. You know, the only time you, you really chimed in was when, when the, the nomination came. And you nominated John, John, you know what I mean? And, and, but the two of you were, you, you were working me like, I mean, the whole thing about, you did not, you did not reorganize after John came, God rest his soul. You did not reorganize, you did not reorganize after that, though. You hadn't reorganized since the May meeting, May, May, May elections. You hadn't reorganized. And it wasn't until the July twenty-second, you know, he passed in early June. It wasn't until three meetings afterwards, July twenty-second meeting, when Andrew said, just as a matter of clarity, you know, there was no urgency, just as a matter of clarity, you know, I think that the public shouldn't understand who's in the appointed positions. And they reorganized on the July twenty-second meeting. It was like three meetings after the, after the passing of the vice chair. It wasn't, there was no urgency at all. And you were, you, you weren't obligated to reorganize at that time. You were reorganizing because you had a May election. It was months after the May election that you reorganized. So where did the urgency come from to reorganize at, in this moment?
Because we lost our chair.
We could lost the chair, David.
We lost our chair. That's why.
And I agree, and I agree.
And it never occurred to neither one of you to call me and ask me, just afford me the opportunity.
I called you to tell you you were gonna chair the meeting. Why didn't you say it to me then?
Why do I have to say it and advocate for myself? Why? Why?
Well, when Andy asked you, you told, you told him-
When, and, and difference, Andy asked me.
Right. And what did you tell?
He didn't call me up and say, hey, you're gonna nominate yourself? He didn't say that.
We don't do.
That's not the way it went.
Now, stop it, David. Stop it. Stop it.
So-
There's two different realities in this world. And on the receiving end, you know, it feels jacked up, jacked up. I, there's no way I can't feel the way I'm feeling.
I'm sorry you feel that way.
There's no way.
David, you are right. The, the optics, and you're, and we've heard everybody-
It's not just optics. It's, it's your statement in the paper. If you wanted to be chair, you could have nominated yourself, cause we're not gonna do it.
You accused us of meeting-
That's your statement. It's in the paper. You're quoted. You're quoted.
You are, listen, the newspaper called me-
You were nominated by members of your peers. And then the next line, if he wanted it, he could have nominated himself. That's your words.
The newspaper called me in response to your accusation that we met prior to the meeting.
That's what they called me on also. That you accused, that's, did not, did not.
Yes, we did. I swear to God. I swear to God.
The paper called for a response to your-
That's a lie.
On everything I love, so, everything I love.
So, listen.
I asked you, where are these conversations happening? And how come I'm not a party to him as interim chair?
No, you did not. And-
Swear on everything I love, Carol, you do that. And the white room will strike you out of the chair.
Nope.
Alright, so, alright. So I believe we, we already approved that we are in discussion of reorg, correct?
Yes.
So, as the president, am I allowed to make a motion?
I believe you have, and I would go to the recording secretary, cause I've kinda lost my, my space here. But I believe that you've got a motion and a second to reorg. Is that correct?
Alright, so all in favor? I think we did this, but yes.
What was the motion?
This is a motion to reorg. I think we did this, but, okay. Yes. Just to, just to be sure we do it correctly.
But you haven't taken a vote yet to reorg.
I would like to hear a motion to have David Whedon-
Well, you've got the motion to reorg. Have you voted on that?
We have the motion to do that. So let's do it.
On the motion to reorg, yes.
So I'd like to, I, I would like, cause I don't know if I can make a motion.
Yes, you can.
Can I? Alright, so I'd like the motion that David Whedon-
The audience, please be quiet. We're trying to do something here that you've been sitting here asking us to do all night. Now, please, be quiet and give us, us respect. We're not the Three Stooges anymore.
So, I, so-
That's insulting. You can leave in the middle.
So I motion, Carol, good, we're good. So, I'd like the motion that David Whedon become, is the new chair.
And take all over the, Andrew's responsibilities. I second it.
Did you do, did you bump, bump that on end of his?
No.
No.
I already have, I already have more responsibilities than any of the other liaisons.
That's right.
Hold on, hold on, I'm sorry.
On my list.
John, did you make the motion?
Mike, alright.
He made a motion.
I made a motion for David to become chair.
And I seconded it.
Okay.
And now I make a motion for John Cotton to be vice chair.
Alright, well, one at a time, one at a time.
I suggest one at a time.
Oh, okay.
Alright, what, so, all in favor of David Whedon becoming the new chair?
Yes.
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 Okay. Um, sec-
I make a motion for John Cotton to be vice chair.
I'll second that motion.
All in favor?
Yes.
Yes.
Yes. Um, and I-
Make a motion for Tom O'Hara to be clerk.
Is, is that not already?
Which he already is.
Okay. Second. He already is. So he, that's, that's not changing. Um, I lost my-
You, you should vote on that.
Yes.
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 Yes. Um-
You've got all those.
We did it.
So that would be effective at the conclusion of the meeting?
Yes.
But I will also, um, town manager, I think, I believe is next up for town manager updates?
Yes.
Okay.
If I'm correct.
Well, I wouldn't be here without Chuckie Green. I don't know if he's still here.
No, you're not.
Cause he was on the original board. But at any rate, what I will say is, I did have a discussion with now former chair, Cotton, today. And I know that there are some assignments that former selectman Gottlieb had. And he asked me what needed to be filled immediately by somebody sitting here. And I mentioned two. One was CPC. I need a, a select liaison, a select board member liaison. And-
It's a member. It's a voting member.
Thank you.
And we've, we're asked, David, if we have to-
And that is priority number one. And another priority was CIP, not CPC, CIP, because I believe that we're gonna have an issue or two there shortly. So, that is all I was looking for. And I'm not looking for any vote tonight. But, but, but-
We got this.
I know CPC would like, and I believe we can add this-
We're gonna take care of this right now.
Well, then, then that's great. And I don't think there'll be any opposition.
Right. So, I, I don't know if we need a motion to appoint?
I, I would-
I, why not? Can I have a motion to, to bring up discussion of CIP in?
And CPC.
In CPC.
So moved.
So I have a second?
Second.
Okay. First, second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay. With that being said, per our discussion before the meeting, just to be honest and truthful, I did have a discussion with you earlier. And I asked you if you would be willing to take on the CPC role. And, and it was, and the reason I had the discussion, and I just wanna keep it, you know, hopefully calm down things. But I will tell you, I was confused as hell of everything I was reading on social media, because I knew nothing about CPC. I didn't know anything about the development. And that is true. Because I was not Andy, and I was not involved with any of those discussions. I'm assuming he was. So, I did ask you prior to the meeting if you would accept it. So I'd like to, I would like to ask if you would accept the role as the, the new position on the CPC.
I, I'll, I'll do that.
Okay, thank you.
Second. If we need a vote.
Yes.
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 And I was, I'd be happy to consider taking, taking on CIP. And this could all be on a, we could totally reorg. And if, when we have a, you know, in three months' time, when we have a full board, if-
For the liaison.
Obviously, because all the liaison positions will have to be assigned. So it'll probably, we could have one whole meeting to discuss it. Whatever, whatever the board feels at that time. So if you're okay, I, so I would, unless someone else wants to become, you know, CIP, if not, I'll take it.
It's the capital improvement program.
So, do you have a motion for, only because I'm kinda quasi-
Make a motion for John Cotton to be a member of the CIP.
First, and as a second. All in favor?
Yes.
Yes.
And what I did mention was, it, while, while, still, while I'm still residing chair, as I mentioned to Mr. Collins, if the word can go out to all the remaining liaison positions that Andy held, that if they need a representative at one of those meetings, or for whatever, to discuss with a chairman, he would, they would come to him, he would go to the chair, which would be Mr. Whedon.
Yes.
Right.
Is that good?
That's good.
That's very good. And we've filled the two immediate needs. So, thank you.
Um, and-
That, I'm not saying that the others are not important. I'm just saying, that's what I really needed filled.
Right now.
And that's why we gotta get that done now.
Right.
So, are you all set with your town manager updates, Mr. Collins?
I am all set.
Sure.
I am all set.
Then that is young. Um-
All set.
So, um, so I, you know, I, I was actually gonna read this in the public comment, but I, I don't think it's wrong to read, well, you know what? I'm gonna go over to the microphone. Because it, originally, I was gonna read it in a public comment. But it's not probably what you think. So, first off, can everyone?
No.
Name and address.
John Cotton, thirty Hester Road, Mashpee. Speaking as a resident, I am hoping that, and not only this, I'm disheartened by what went down today and, and, and last meeting. The optics, and I guess the optics is probably just one word, I think, that encompasses what I, I was not happy about. Because being chair, I just want what's best for Mashpee. And, and I hope you believe that, David. So I would like to sincerely apologize for putting you through this and making this feel uneasy. I will do my best as your vice chair and on this board to try to, you know, turn the page. And I hope we all can turn the page, as we're all human. And, you know what? I think we made mistakes. I think everybody has made mistakes in their lives. It was not a, it was not what social media put it up to and made it out to be. And I'm telling you that honestly, from my heart. So, that being said, I did wanna read something, because, and, and, oh, I still have two minutes? Wow. So, and this is actually just goes out to, I'd like to say thank you to our former select board member, Andy Gottlieb. He served on this board timelessly and always fought for the best interest of all. He used his knowledge and experience to make Mashpee a better place to live. His input and improvements and decisions for the future has made the town what it is today. And for that, we are so grateful. I am so grateful. I'm speaking for myself. I'm sorry. Andy has left some big shoes to fill and has helped lay the groundwork for the next big chapter of the town of Mashpee. As a member of this board, I will continue to do my job and make Mashpee the best it can be. In closing, I would like to thank you, Andy, for all you have taught me and for your hard work and dedication over the years. And I wish you well in your future endeavors. So, I did wanna just make that statement to Andy. I think he, he made such a difference to this town. But I do wish, with my last minute, that, I, I do wish that we can turn the page. And I, you know, I am one of those people that I go to bed and it's a new day tomorrow. I hope that we can do that. And, 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 and get back to work. Because I will tell you, everything we've heard over the last few months, and everything we've had over the last few years, we have a lot of work. And I'll tell you, we have a lot of work. And I know you know it. And from the bottom of my heart, I would like to say again, I am sorry for everything. But I hope that, to the, to the town, I am sorry for the optics. And there's a lot, but I will say, there was a lot of mistruths in social media. And it got, it gets, it gets out of hand. So I will, I, I implore the public and the social media comments to just say, stay, you know, human. Everyone has, you know, the name-calling, it's just, it's not productive. We can't, we, we, I, we've continued, we'll tailspin out. And it, it's just not good, because we can't concentrate on our job. And I, so I, I'm asking the public to please refrain from negativity. It would be great if someone wants to post good stuff, positive things. And so, with that, thank you very much. And I'm sorry I went over. You sure, Mr. Collins, you don't have any more?
I don't have anything else.
Anybody else has, um, anything else? If not, I will look for a motion to adjourn?
Make a motion to adjourn.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.